I'm going to call to order the Town of Old Sabre's zoning commission meeting for Monday, December 1st, 2025, 7:00 PM. Town Hall, first floor conference room at 302 Main Street, Old Sabre. A roll call, myself, Mark Calorella Chair, John Henry Secretary, who's absent this evening. And Mike Kelly will be seated for John, Laura Gray, Robin Kelly, and Derek Kennedy, our regular commission members. Welcome, Robin and Derek, through the zoning commission. We also have in attendance Casey as an alternate, Casey Hand. Sorry, I almost went over you there. As well as Joanne Galley, our recording clerk, and Chris Costa, our CEO is not able to be here this evening. And we have zero in the audience. I'm sorry, zero, zero online and six in the audience at last time.
Did you chip what you have?
Oh, and Brenda, thank you. Forgot about you, Brenda, sorry. Next, regular business is the minutes from our Monday, November 17th, 2025 meeting. I'll make a motion to approve. Seconded by Laura Gray, any discussion? Not hearing any, but move to vote. All those in favor, signal aye. Aye, opposed, and abstention is two, since you both weren't here the last time. There is no correspondence other than what relates to tonight's agenda. We have in front of us the 2026 meeting calendar. I presume everyone has had a chance to look at that. I found no corrections. Joanne, you double-checked it. Did anybody have any questions or concerns regarding that?
No.
And so that becomes our meeting agenda for the 2026 calendar year. Do we need to vote that? Okay, so make a motion to approve the schedule of meeting dates for 2026 as presented. Seconded by Derek Kennedy, any discussion? Not hearing any, all those in favor, signal by saying aye. Aye, opposed, abstained, passes 5-0-0. Everyone also did get the zoning permission numbers, and I presume that everything is correct on there in terms of your individual phone numbers and email addresses. If not, please let Joanne know. Did you get one?
It should have been in everybody's.
It was in everybody's.
Yes, I did, Brenda. I just had it stuck on my minutes.
No problem. Can we vote now?
Election of officers.
All right, moving on to item D, which is election of officers as well as represented inland wetlands and watercourses. For chairman, is there any motions on the floor?
One big motion. I would like to nominate Mark Calorella for the zoning commission chairperson.
Okay, is there a second? Seconded by Laura Gray, are there any other nominations from the floor? Not hearing any, we'll take it to a vote. All those in favor, signal by saying aye. Aye, opposed, abstained, passes 5-0-0. Next officer would be Vice Chair, and I would like to make a motion to nominate Derek Kennedy. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mike Kelly. Are there any other nominations from the floor? Not hearing any, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor, signal by saying aye. Aye, opposed, abstained, passes 5-0-0. And lastly would be John Henry, Secretary. I'd like to nominate him for a continuance as Secretary of the Zoning Commission. Is there a second? Seconded by Derek Kennedy. Are there any other nominations from the floor? Not hearing any, we'll move on to a vote. All those in favor, signal by saying aye. Aye, opposed, abstained, passes 5-0-0. Thank you, everyone. Congratulations to everyone who takes on the responsibility of office. We also have inland wetlands and watercourses. I've been doing that for the past year. Plus, I'm happy to continue that unless there's other individuals that would like to get involved in that going forward. Not hearing any. I can't nominate myself, I don't believe, but I'd be willing to continue that if somebody wanted to nominate.
I make a motion to nominate Mark Calorella for inland wetlands.
Thank you, Laura. Is there a second? Seconded by John Kelly, or Mike Kelly, sorry. All those in favor, signal by saying aye. Aye, opposed, abstained, passes 5-0-0. And just before we move on to new business, just for all the commission members and alternates, as well as our new additions to the commission, not only welcoming everybody back, but when it comes to anything that's on our agenda, and if anyone has a connection to an applicant or might be a neighbor or a friend or a family member, it should be seriously considered to recuse yourself from that. If in any case that a ruling ever did get appealed, then it would not look good in court. So that's up to you as the individuals, as Chair. If you did recuse yourself, I would prefer that you leave the room and then we call you back in after that session was over, okay? Moving on to new business, we have A, Visowitz, application for municipal coastal site plan review, construction of a 965 square foot garage with a two-bedroom ADU at 26 Villa Road, MAP 1, Lot 90, Residence A District, Coastal Area Management Zone, AE Flood Zone. Owner, Thaddeus P. Visowitz, Agent Joe Wren. Mr. Wren, welcome.
Good evening, everyone. Hopefully, everyone had a nice holiday break.
Excuse me, Laura, can I recuse myself? I need to recuse myself on this, please.
Okay, no problem. And we'll text you when we're done so that you can sign back in.
Thank you.
You have her.
Yeah.
Good evening. So laws, statutes have changed. Laws have changed and now requires all projects within the coastal zone in front of the board, such as the zoning commission. So previously, there were some exemptions, and one of the exemptions was a single-family house, especially if you are more than 100 feet away from a coastal resource. This property is more than 100 feet away from a coastal resource. It would have been exempt previously, but since this application came in after that October 1st date, it's now applicable. And on this property, it's kind of special. It was three lots for the original subdivision map in the early 1900s. Most recently, it was two lots. It was a vacant lot here, and then it was a long skinny lot with this existing yellow shaded house on it. What the owners proposed to do is to build a new house on this lot, and what they did subsequently was to merge the lots together into one. So now we have the whole square as one lot, where it was originally three and then two and now one bigger lot. And they've since removed the existing house. A few months back, we received approvals to build a new five-bedroom, single-family residence at that location. We had health approvals, we had zoning approvals, flood approvals, everything, all set, building permit, everything. The purpose for this application, it's coming in again after that October 1st deadline, is to construct a zoning-compliant accessory dwelling unit in this location, so more or less in place of the house that was removed. So there will be a main house on the property, which was previously approved without CAM because it didn't need it at that point in time. And now the new proposed ADU, that does need CAM, because again, after October 1st. So for the new members, CAM is an acronym for Coastal Area Management, right? So a lot of our properties, mostly south of Route 1, are within a coastal zone, within 1,000 feet of a coastal resource. So any of those properties, even if it's hundreds of feet away from the marsh, will require that something similar to this moving forward. But here, we're in a, we're in a special flood hazard area, like public half of the town, or at least the third of the town is. So the main house was designed to be FEMA compliant. And as you may or may not know, the Town of Old Sabre picks the FEMA elevation and adds two feet to it. So we don't have to be only as high as FEMA likes us to be. We have to be two more feet to be consistent with the town flood ordinance. So this house met those regulations. This house is designed to meet those regulations. That is reviewed by your town engineer, Lee Jacobson. So they do a flood review. We put in an application, and it goes through your consultant review process. And at the end of the day, the house is built exceeding FEMA regulations plus the town flood ordinance. So coastal area management, things they look for. They look for, and by the way, maybe some repetitive, but I think it's important for new members to understand the process as well. So it comes through zoning, but zoning is required to refer it to the state Connecticut DEP. And DEP comments on it, just as advisory. They can't say no or yes, they just, they comment to the zoning. Things that they look for, and that zoning looks for, are FEMA flood compliance. So as I said, we already have that. They look for that you're not putting too much coverage on the land and causing too much excessive storm or runoff. The town has zoning regulations for those things, and that's called coverage. So you have building coverage, or structure coverage, and that's all in the table here. So we're not asking for any variances. We don't need to go to zoning board of appeals for this. Everything is zoning compliant. So the coverage, all of the setbacks, all the ADU requirements, everything is zoning compliant. The only reason why we have to come in front of the board again is for coastal area management. So all the boxes checked. We have a septic system here and a septic system here, one for each house. This is an existing system that was approved for that proposed accessory dwelling unit. That's not that old, just within maybe 10 or 12 years old, that system. So we have the health approvals. So we have co-compliant septic systems. We're compliant with all the coverage for the storm or runoff and so forth. And we have FEMA compliant structures. And lastly, the beach is on the other side of Shore Drive, more than 100 feet away. There is no, there are no coastal resources within 100 feet here as far as tidal wetlands or the beach or the water, anywhere around this. So again, it's compliant with all zoning regulations. The CAM application looks like this. You have a copy of it. This is what went to DEP with the plan as well. DEP, I noticed on the online file that they did have a response.
Did you get a copy of today's letter?
I did, I saw it online. So I read through it online, and basically, they are saying that, you know, their design, the structure, they have to be designed for FEMA, which we already went through, and they are. We would not be able to get building permits for either structure if they were not flood compliant, not only to FEMA, but plus to town as well. So we have that box checked. Now, all these CAM applications for structures and flood zones, a common comment that usually comes back from DEP for the zoning commissions to consider is there was a three-bedroom house on the property before. Again, that was, that was two lots, and it's all merged together now. So now we have a zoning compliant five-bedroom house, and we have a zoning compliant two-bedroom house. So yes, if you just look at the numbers, there are seven bedrooms proposed on the property now, all compliant with health and zoning rules and regulations, and there was a three-bedroom house there before. So they look at that and they say the zoning commission should consider we're putting four additional bedrooms in the flood zone. Couple things about that. That doesn't necessarily mean that there are more people. Does it have potential for more people? Maybe. For the current applicants who are here, by the way, Phyllis and Ted are with us here on the right-hand side of the audience. And there will be two occupants in this house, and potentially one, maybe two in the other one. So for the time being, they're building this house, they're keeping this house. This is their permanent residence. There will be three, maybe four people living on the property. A three-bedroom house could have, and people living. You just don't know. You could have a family with, you know, seven children living in that three-bedroom house. It's happened before and it happens presently. And the other major point that I always like to make is after, if you all were around Irene and Sandy in 11 and 12, the, there were a lot of discussions with raising houses and DEP talking about enlarging homes in the flood zone. And the emergency management services from Old Sabre said we would rather have larger FEMA compliant houses up high and safe above the flood so there's no, there's no fire, there's no rescue to try to save someone, even if they're in their house, they're essentially safe, versus having a smaller house down, sitting on the ground, that could be damaged, a fire can start, there could be floodwaters, and very difficult to get to as well. So they would rather have the larger structures up out of the flood zone, FEMA compliant, rather than smaller structures down in the floods in dangerous way. You know, other reasons for that too is we have smaller structures that aren't FEMA compliant. They could get picked up off the foundation and moved, and that causes other damage to other property as well. Where here, these are up on structurally designed foundations where the water is made just to go through the lower levels entirely of flood level. And the water is, is made to go through flood vents, and it could go through from all directions in and then back out as the, as the water recedes. So it's all, it's all designed to that. I recall, actually, there was a nor'easter, I think in 2010, December of 2010. That was before 11 and 12. And two houses burned down together down at the end of Chalker Beach Road. And they came to us and we had to design them to be FEMA compliant. And the houses were here, and then the new houses were way up here. And it's, what are, what are you doing to us? Why, why does our house need this many stairs? But then the very next year, Irene came and then Sandy, and they were the first ones to call to thank the town and us for designing a FEMA compliant structure because they watched on cameras that the water swirled around below their house, and it kept the house in path. So there's a big benefit in building FEMA compliant structures, as we've all known. And in this case, it's required and it's what CAM looks for. So as far as the bedrooms, I think that's, you know, they say zoning commission should consider that. But again, you could have more people living in a three-bedroom house than total seven bedrooms on a permanent basis. You know, no, seven bedrooms aren't going to be occupied if you have a major hurricane coming. The people aren't going to be there. It's either mandatory or optional evacuation, but no one, you know, in their right mind would stay for category five hurricane. So with that, I think that covers the state review, the purpose of CAM, everything that we did to make this zoning compliant and CAM compliant as well. So if you have any questions, I can try to answer this.
Any questions?
I'm having trouble understanding the whole application that, my understanding is there was two lots. There was a primary structure, a residential structure on it. The application was, we want to put a house on in addition to the second structure. That was denied in zoning, it was denied on appeal. This is an independent residential two-bedroom structure. I mean, I don't understand. It's almost like we're acting as an appeals court of the lower courts to the lower commission's decisions. And I, if they're going to approve this, it almost seems like they should have just let them keep the house. And I would think, I mean, it's a real stretch, but I would think there could even be a question of liability. Like, you made us spend money taking the house down. You made us spend money, put up the new house. You made us spend attorney fees, and now we end up with exactly what we asked for in the first place. I just don't, it's not ancillary. I mean, it's a separate residential.
The prior house, five-bedroom house was?
Three-bedroom. Finally, three-bedroom.
I know, but that's taken down. You got approval for a five-bedroom, larger structure. That's a previous application that was approved.
I understand.
FEMA approved, and it was Health District. This, all that we're looking at here on this application this evening is the accessory dwelling unit, which is a separate building, which, on the street side, I guess, right.
How is it an accessory residential unit? Why couldn't the little house be an accessory unit? I mean, it's, it's a residential unit. I mean, it's, it's not ancillary. Ancillary to me would be.
That's a choice that is made by the property owners, okay? They present this application in front of the commission this evening for approval or denial. They've already obtained FEMA approval for the accessory dwelling unit, as well as Connecticut Area Health District approval, okay? Even though it's in a CAM zone, they've been approved by those two agencies.
I understand that, that's the name.
As, as that new structure. And they have, the applicant has a right to either rehab or do a new one if it works within the zoning regulations.
But the underlying decision before was you can't have two residential structures.
They combined the lots.
I know, and they said you can combine the lot and have one unit.
So I can clarify a little bit. Originally, looking back at the old maps and so forth, this was by itself. This house was on its own separate lot. There were two lots originally, but this, this was one lot here, and it was vacant, it was just a vacant grass lot. And what the applicant wanted to do at first is just to build a house on this lot. But going back through the records, they were told that this was not a building lot by itself. And I kind of disagree with that, me looking at the maps. I'm not an attorney, but anyways, that's where it ended up. You did the research on it. So what they decided to do was to merge all of the lots and have one big property, and then compliant with zoning, again, no variance. It's just out of the main house and then the accessory dwelling unit.
Yeah, but no one could build on that lot. It was only 8,000 square feet and you needed 12,050. And they said, there's no way you can build on the little lot. The only way you can build on this is to treat it as one lot. It's a same, even though it had different tax numbers and different addresses, it's, it's always been treated as one lot. We're going to treat it as one lot. You can put one house on that one lot. What is different today that they're allowed to have two residential units on one lot?
It's not much different, but there are, there is one conforming lot now versus two non-conforming lots.
The zoning regulations treat accessory dwelling units different. See, that I don't know anything about. An accessory dwelling unit, there, it's restricted in terms of size and some other, now they can be separate units. But, so the zoning regulations allow an accessory dwelling unit in situations where they wouldn't allow like two houses, two, two primary dwelling units in one lot.
More of the confusion underlies, underlies with, with the lots that were here. The attorney originally tried to make the case that this was an existing non-conforming lot of record. We have many of them in town. Many houses sitting on 3,000 and 4,000 square foot lots. This was 8,800, but it wasn't the 12.5 minimum. And the town made a case that that's not an existing non-conforming building lot of record. And the applicant's attorney tried, tried to make that case, and it didn't, didn't proceed. So fortunately, they won the next property over, so they're able to combine them and make a 13,200 lot. That's more than the 12.5. So now they have a conforming lot, and your zoning regulations allow you to have an ADU if you have more than 4,500 square feet of property. So yes, they're, they're getting, you know, they had to go around the circle, but this is now zoning conforming. Before, it wouldn't have been zoning conforming.
Brenda, just do you have the citation for your accessory dwelling? So it's kind of formally, we're going to be a lot of them, what are.
Yeah, I get it. Just as more of a clarifying question. So max building height's 35 feet. The proposed says plus or minus 34.5. What's the range of the plus or minus that we're aware of?
Well, it can't be more than 35. But sometimes in building, what happens is, you know, even your ridge that counts, right? So you could be 34.6, you could be 34.4. So you just can't go over 35.
And, and I get that. I'm just wondering, making sure that that's just being followed, that's all.
Yep.
Good question. Mike, do you have any questions?
I mean, this is just, you know, the record is even, but on your notes, you're only showing the one name for the application, but then on the general note, there's both names on it. And just create a thought. I know it's more.
I'm not sure Ted and Phyllis' names both on the properties? Or does it want to, I'm trying to just kind of clarify.
Yeah, it was taken a little clearer, I thought. But you're using the middle field, the address here is all yellow.
Yeah, those map references are just strictly written as they are. I'm not sure which, which, no. So it is Ted and Phyllis' names.
But on, on the actual application form, it's just Ted, with the address being middle field. And here it's open, right here, that would be it. And again, it ends one Villa Road, Old Sabre.
Yeah, so they add more than one address. Obviously, they have more than one.
Understood. I just didn't know. Should both have been, I believe both names should have been on here.
The property record reflects both names. So we've, I recall.
Yeah, the property.
And the site plan, where it says Thaddeus and Phyllis, so.
Yes, that's it.
And this question more of a matter of making sure there's clarity for the record.
Right.
This ADU has obtained FEMA approval.
Yes.
Correct. And it is also approved the 100 A, uh, Health District people.
Correct.
Yep. So we're here looking at it as a CAM application. You saw, you've seen the December 1st letter today from DEP. Pretty straightforward concerns. I think the one avenue that I would ask you for consideration and that the commission would second that would be to offer more pervious in the driveway and patio, if possible.
So right before I came up there, I leaned over and I talked to Ted about that. And he said, they're, they're, they're old people. He said, I didn't say that. And the cross-stone, the uneven, loose surface is not good for them and aging in place of the, even the permanent residents. But I told him there might be a concern of that, even though we are equal to or under the coverage allowable by zoning regulations. And he would consider doing a, we have really good sand and gravel on site, so he would consider doing a drywall for the roof, the roof fence, to get the roof gutters into the.
And leave the driveway as asphalt paved? And what about the patio?
Back here, this is a part of the wood structure. That piece.
And is there any patio proposed? There is no other for the, the home patio proposed, right?
Yeah. So we just have a paved driveway here. Just that I already talked to them about. The roof area, you could see, is larger than the driveway area.
Yeah.
Probably the driveway area is almost equal to the main house roof. So we can, you know, choose one of the buildings. Obviously, we already have this roof on, on the property.
Would you do both structures as that, or?
We can put both structures into the drywall, yes.
All right. So as a matter of condition, if we were to approve this evening, that could be agreeable upon?
Yes.
Would pervious pavers be an option for part of the parking, like for the parking areas for the cars are, or not?
Anywhere, it's all for part of the driveway? In front of the ADU or not? Really like home and square feet?
Well, I think wherever you could put them, but I was thinking sort of in like the bump out area where you have.
The turnaround.
The turnaround area there.
I mean, so that would be.
Great job on the hesitation. I'm thinking that the drywells for the roof, which again is a lot more area than the driveway, would take at least half of the impervious off and put it into the ground. And then, like I said, we already have that yellow area that's already discharging to the ground, so if these two houses were awash, you know, we put both houses into drywall, I think there would be a net benefit of infiltration on the property.
Do, in your experience, would it require one or two drywalls?
I can't do the calculations anymore in my head that quickly, but probably two, one for each structure.
Yes. So first, just clarifying, the Street and Rodriguez house is still there, correct? That's the house immediately to the southwest of this house?
This one?
Yeah.
Yeah, that house is still there.
And the, and the yellow shaded structure.
That is what was recently demolished.
That's demolished. And so the proposed ADU will be within the, will be outside of the required setback area.
Yes. Yep. As I said before, it's completely conforming to zoning regulations.
So the, so to Casey's point and then kind of building on that, that setback side to the neighbors will have, will that be where the exist, the structure that was just torn down, will that all, that be yard and grass?
I assume so. Grass and landscaping.
And so where the turnaround area is, and then I see where it says existing landscaped area, but you know, clearly we're wondering, because of the runoff, could anywhere in that setback area, including up to and adjacent to the turnaround, have landscaping that allows for water to, I guess, settle into the yard instead of running further into?
Infiltrate. Even grass will do that. So yeah, that area, all the areas that don't have building or something left shown like parking or building, even where the subject areas are, all those disturbed areas will be at least grassed and then with accent landscaping, of course, around the house, maybe along the edge, a little bit in front of the house, but yes, it'll all be, that will all be pervious now, pervious landscaping.
Wouldn't it be possible to get the copy of the regulation that changed? Everything in this accessory apartment talks about how to speak one unit. And Casey was kind of to tell me the state said it doesn't have to, I just would like to see it, saying that none of this is correct.
I'm not sure if I'm following.
Well, it says standard for accessory apartments that they have to be attached to the main building and they have to be able to alter it so that it doesn't, it can't look like there's two of you in this and then when you, and it has to be able to be altered to go back to like a single family. So none of that sounds like it's appropriate anymore that if you're allowed to have a separate structure, I just wanted to see that.
There's a separate section that are attached.
Because you can have a detached ADU.
Okay, so can you show me where that is?
The next page, the next page or two go the way. Should be attached accessory dwelling.
Again, the use of this is more for zoning staff to review and approve.
Right.
We're here just for the PM application, so I don't mind answering the question.
Yeah, I just want to feel comfortable like we're our decision.
It would not have gotten to us at this point if they had not done something that was allowable.
Yeah, there was a section in that special, section fifty-three or whatever, that's detached.
And that was, I'd say a recent change, but that was something we changed in the last few years.
Yeah, with some state guidelines.
Correct.
Just some state guidelines.
Correct.
I have one question in the meantime, or a comment, I guess. I noticed building coverage, you're bumping right up against your nine square feet under your total max building coverage, so I just want to make sure that the property owners understand that we can't do anything else coverage wise, like we can't put another roof anywhere over any stairs or anything.
Ted is very well versed now on coverage.
All right.
He worked very closely with the architect to design every little square footage, square foot of the ADU to get everything in there because the, even the mechanicals can't be in the flood, they have to be up, so they have to be like on the first floor, so you have to, you need a mechanical room and that takes away from their square, usable square footage in the little house. Everything and more than twelve thousand five hundred square feet here, so even the eaves, all the overhang, so that's all calculated. If you look at these labels, that's all accounted for.
Great, thank you.
Anything else? No? Okay, then I entertain a motion if someone wants to make that at this point. If not, I will proceed with a motion to approve the byproduct application from municipal coastal site plan review, construction of a nine hundred and sixty-five square foot garage with big bedroom, ADU, twenty-six Villa Road, map one lot, ninety residents, eight district, with the following condition being that there would be two roof drywells, is that correct terminology? One for each structure to catch and drain the water. And as the coastal site plan application, why do I do that after? Is there a second? Second by Lord Grek. Is there any discussion? Not hearing any, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor, signal by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstained? You?
Yeah, I just don't feel comfortable.
So you're abstaining or you're?
I'm abstaining.
Abstaining, one abstaining. So there's four yes and one abstention. Is that correct? And passes.
Thank you.
And for the record, the coastal site plan application is approved because it's consistent with all coastal policies and makes all reasonable measures to mitigate adverse impact.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I gotta let Brendan know that we're back. A and B have been withdrawn, so there's nothing for that, those two this evening. Move on to C. Safe Harbor Marina Fairness Application for Special Acceptance Permit and Coastal Site Plan Review to Demolish Two Existing Buildings and Construct a one thousand forty-eight square foot open air pavilion, twenty-two Riverside Avenue, Assessor's Map Fifty-Nine, Lot Ninety-Six, Marine Industrial District, Gateway Conservation Zone, Coastal Area Management Zone. Applicant is Safe Harbor Marina Agent Joe Renn. Our action is to open the public hearing, continue or close by December fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, no later than January fourth of twenty twenty-six. Mr. Renn.
Hello again, to the record, Joe Renn, professional engineer of Indigo, here in town. Again, in front of you, similar to last application, we have a coastal site plan or coastal area management application in front of you for this project. This one's a little bit different in that it's a water dependent use, it's a marina use of the property, so there's slightly different regulations than your standard inward residential property. And also, we have the Connecticut River, so we have the Connecticut River Gateway Commission that covers this particular site, all other sites along the Connecticut River shoreline and down along the coast of the river. So right now on this property, this is somewhat unique in a lot of applications that we'll see. So we have the existing property, it's a tiny little property at the end of Riverside Avenue. There's a little driveway that comes down, SNS Marine is over here, they have a couple of buildings, one here and one here, and there's this little parking lot that has two long buildings here, you can see again in the pale yellow, so one along the north edge and one along the eastern edge. On the eastern edge, the building is actually over the property line in here and that's proposed to be completely removed. The north building is also proposed to be completely removed. If you're standing on site, it's very difficult to even see the water because of these liner buildings that are here, they're very long, narrow, they're not extremely tall, less than fifteen or twenty feet or so, but they do block a lot of the view out to the water and in from the water. That's one of the biggest things that the Gateway Commission looks at, the river scenic view from the water and from the land to the water. So with this particular application, what's proposed is to remove those two old, somewhat dilapidated buildings and just replace it with an open air pavilion for the marina guests. There is currently a dock here with slips that's been there for decades. With these two buildings, there's a gravel parking area in here, the parking area will remain, but it'll be brought up more to code. You can't stripe gravel because the stripes just disappear very quickly, but we've added wheel stops there to delineate the spots, which is typical on loose gravel pervious parking areas. So this building, Denise Von Dossel's here, she's the project architect, Josh Magnati is from the Marina, Safe Harbor Marina, and Denise designed a beautiful structure, provided architectural renderings of that. This structure also has to be FEMA compliant and it's already been reviewed by your consulting engineer, so all the power outlets, the power coming into the building, there has to be a stairway to get up to it, it has to be elevated above the flood zone, plus again, that two feet. So it's an entire FEMA flood compliant structure, whereas the two that are being removed are not compliant to anything. They're not compliant to zoning, they're not compliant to FEMA, they're not compliant to coastal area management. There's a, also there's a tidal wetland that comes in right to the property line from the north area here too, and that building is literally right up at the edge of that, it's up above a little bit in elevation, but it's literally right to the edge and over it, basically hanging over a little bit on the north side. On the east side, I'm sorry, I referred to that one, you said. Yeah, on the east side, the building is actually over the water underneath and as part of a previously approved DEP application, Josh's group is redoing the seawall, so we show that on the plan and the seawall will be back here, almost where the front edge of that building is. In that area where the building's being removed in front of the new seawall, there will be plantings in there too, tidal wetland restoration right in this area, not part of this application, but just to give you the whole picture. So buildings will be removed, so no more non-conforming building on site, plus additional tidal wetland restoration there. And in addition to that, not necessarily required by the regulations, but they're adding, there was a request from the town to add some landscaping on the north edge, off the edge of the parking to the property line here, that's over five hundred square feet added there. And then there's also additional landscaping added between the handicap ramp area and the stairway that goes up to the elevated electrical platform in this area. The site is, will be much more pervious, we're keeping the stone, pervious stone parking lot as I mentioned before, but we're adding landscaping that's not there today and we're also removing a lot more building than we're putting back. So the overall coverage is being reduced, maintaining the pervious area, and then we're also adding the wheel stops here and we're adding a paved handicap aisle, which is also required at this location, right next to the accessible ramp that goes up to the, to the structure itself. So right now, there is no ADA parking space that meets current today ADA requirements and is not designated and then all the parks is kind of like a free-for-all parking, there's no delineations at all. So with the wheel stops and with that ADA park, so it brings it up much closer to standard or better than standard than it has been in the past. So with all that, we view this as a, you know, definitely a huge improvement to the property. Gateway has already reviewed this, they have a letter in their file, they also agree with that. I didn't see any DEP comments back on this one, but since we're reducing the pervious coverage, we are removing buildings, we're restoring tidal wetlands, we're adding landscaping, these are all the positive things that DEP usually asks for on these type projects and they're all implemented. The last part of the landscaping, I just wanted to add, there's, there's a fence almost along the entire western edge and then there's a little gap to a couple residential properties in the, well, would be the northwest corner. So there are some arbivites that are included in there as well, just for screening to the residential zone and the residential properties that is not there now. So have those and six of them in that corner and then we have the fence down along this edge. So from all perspectives, from all angles, it's an improvement to the property itself. One thing that you didn't have that we just received today, Josh actually had Seacoast Designs Landscape just come up with a planting plan of those areas and have multiples of those, but you could pass over around two.
Do you have one for Chris?
Yeah, I'll actually pass it and pack it up. We updated the, we updated the site plan to just include these changes to the land, these improvements of the landscape and so forth.
Yeah, we have a record.
Chris? Here's another copy of the plan.
First one he handed out is an update of what we would do.
Yeah, it's an updated site plan that just incorporates the, incorporates the comments from the engineer about adding the spring and also incorporating the landscaping as designed by Seacoast. And then if you don't have any questions related to that, I'll just let Denise show you the pavilion really quickly and then we can answer.
Sure. We'll go on.
Yep, that's it. Good evening. For the record, Denise Von Dossel from KB Designs and the Architects. So basically, this is just a roofed open structure, pavilion about thirty, thirty feet by thirty feet. It has a ramp, it's approximately just shy of thirty feet down the, to get from the parking in onto the, into the pavilion deck, which is approximately two and a half feet above the average ground level. And then the, and then it has a utility platform that's approximately five by eight, so five foot two and a half by eight foot two, with its own staircase, which is required. All of that is, the platform is elevated above the base flood elevation and all the equipment will be actually above the designed flood elevation, so all electrical needs the FEMA requirements. The whole roof structure, it was designed so that the entire roof structure is above the designed flood elevation for FEMA, so we can have lighting within that structure, downlighting into the pavilion, so it's not spilling out per se. downlighting into the pavilion, so it's not spilling out per safety as convenience. And all that has to be, you know, FEMA compliant. So, all of that is, again, it's really, now you have, you know, with this open pavilion, there's no walls to it, it's just piers, and it's going to be a big improvement to the, to the property because you'd be able to see straight through where right now you have those. The overall height is no more than nineteen feet, so well, you know, under the thirty-five required. That does not include the cupola, which is a non-lit cupola, just for aesthetics.
It's all open wall?
All open.
And no, speaking, no temporary coverings of any sort?
Nothing, no. And this is only for use by the, so.
So, there's no electric outlets, no switches, no, they have to be above?
Yeah.
And that's something for, and then you said there's the tower, is that the, the tower that rids all the electric?
Utility platform, is that all the utility platform? That's where all the, they, they have a, there's a whole bunch of electrical equipment.
Yeah.
That's wired for the marina.
It feeds the dock tower, so none of that is compliant right now.
Well, my only question is, it says eleven point five, I thought it'd be thirteen.
The equipment has to be above thirteen or above.
So, it'll be eleven point five, then it has to be another.
Yeah, so, yeah, because the equipment, you have to be able to stand there, and certain components have to be at five-foot height level, but yet, the whole thing has to be where all the, the box can be below the thirteen, but anything is, any of the electrical components. So, we had to work with the company putting them in, make sure that the utility platform is at the right height for the equipment to be at, to meet the designed flood elevation, so that.
Any other question for Denise on the pavilion? That'll be a similar pavilion structure as other.
Yeah, they had a similar one right down the street, yeah, that we did a couple years ago.
I guess just a simple, simple question, kind of similar to the last application thing is due to the, due to the surface area of the roof and being right on the water, is there, what's the, what's the current, what's your current design for water runoff from the roof? Is that just straight onto the ground, or are we trying to figure out a way to minimize runoff or into some sort of buffer prior to it flowing out?
As, as mentioned before, substantially reducing the building coverage, keeping the pervious nature of the park on, we're adding seven hundred, eight hundred square feet of landscaping, that's not there today, maybe even close to a thousand with the arbivites. So, with all of that, there's a definite benefit for stormwater runoff and a reduction of stormwater.
And the parking area is all gravel, pervious gravel, every is gravel.
Couple other things I just wanted to mention is we included the signs, which is just two wayfinding signs on the property, there's one at the beginning of the driveway, that's only a couple of square feet, it's three point seven five square feet, since it's less than four square feet, it complies as a wayfinding sign, and that's all the way by Riverside Avenue at the beginning of the driveway. That sign has been there for a while, and it used to be Oakley Marina, we provided a picture of what it was before, and we're just going to change the sign place, same shape, same size, just to say St. Harbor Marina. That's three point seven five square feet, and then right on the gate, when you come down here, you go through SNS property, they have buildings on either side, so there needs to be a sign here saying this is where you need to go for St. Harbor, and they do have a roll-away security gate there, and on that security gate, there is another sign, sign B, which is two point two, and again, we're taking that one, that's there, and just replacing with the St. Harbor tagged. This went through our architectural review, they have a letter in your file that they find this as an improvement to the existing property. And lastly, I just wanted to go through, Nate Jacobson did a review and had some comments, the plan that you have in front of you incorporates these comments, and it was the reason for the minor revisions to the site plan. So, the first two comments just deal with the property becoming more conforming for landscaping and for zoning regulations, so I don't have to go through those specifically. The first one, or the number three, so there is part of your regulations that, especially in marinas and water-dependent uses, they're developed areas. So, the gateway has a hundred-foot riparian buffer from the river, right? So, areas like this can't be a hundred feet away because then they won't be able to access the water. So, this, as his comment in number three says, this is considered a developed area. He said, he goes on to say, virtually the entire site would be classified as a developed area, that would generally make replacement of vegetation impractical, except as in comment number four below, which he then talks about the five hundred and five square foot area, that's along the north side. Since his, his review, we've actually added the other landscaped area between the ramp and the handicap parking spot there, and he does talk about some screenings, the residential properties in the northwest corner, which we've added to this plan as well. So, that's why I gave you copies of this plan, because it complies with his.
So, the six plant that he said the northwest corner in response to item number four of them.
Yes, Jacobson. Yeah, he says along the northern property line is also zoning district boundary line, adjacent residential zone requires six-foot-high mixed evergreen plantings, ten feet on center, so that's what we've added in that corner. And then, the zone line is here, so this is residential, and then on the south side of that, that line is this marine.
And this legend goes along with those plantings?
Yes.
Which were not on the first print.
That's, that's correct, yep. A revised print has those, that first sheet that you have there, you can see the sheet, that's the one by the ramp, this is the down area.
Yep.
And then, the other, the other one along the north side is the larger one, and that planting thing, it's not the scale, but it just gives you the varieties and the types of the plants.
So, this landscape plan one reflective of the ramp area.
Ramp, right?
Correct. Corner right there, correct?
Yep. And the other larger one is the northern.
This also says landscape plan one, so I'm not sure whether it comes, obviously, there's a big things in drawings, but this is located with.
That's the one along the northern edge.
And those that are on the plan, the six on the side, on the two side.
That's in addition to that.
That's what these are identified with.
These, these are in addition to that.
Okay, so this is.
Those two areas are just the shaded landscape derivatives?
Yeah.
North, we'll call one north and one east. And then, these are in addition to that in response to Jacobson's comment, screening.
So, the second one is in this area, yes?
Correct, the larger one.
So, what we're missing is this definition and type of plants and specs for these six.
They're called out right here, it says, two, green giant, arbivite, and that call up. Six of them.
And, and what's the height?
Six foot minimum, according to the comment in the zoning regulation, I've heard, six foot minimum.
So, what's, do we have a call out for what's going to be planted in the five hundred and five?
Yeah, that's the landscape.
Age two, one hundred.
So, that's the ramp length, and then the second sheet is the five hundred square foot. Those are all designed by a landscape designer familiar with self-tolerant areas and so forth, and the species are selected appropriately.
So, how will this be incorporated into the site plan?
That is part of the application documents, so that Josh is working with Seacoast that came up with this, so once they develop a property in this way, those areas will be installed by Seacoast according to there.
Okay, could we, sure, could we have a landscape table added to final plans?
Sure.
The motion, the condition we should have is.
Yeah.
Two plus that third defined on the written document.
Right, that's fine, we move that. It's basically taking what I, this, and then putting it right in. That's, that's fine.
Jared, did you have a question or any points?
Yeah, there you go. Just some clarification, that's all. Understanding the, the map a little bit, so the, the seawall, the dark gray line?
Yep.
Correct? The, to the east of the seawall where the existing yellow building is?
Yep.
That is going to be, that is or is not going to also have vegetation?
That is going to be, that's the tidal wetland restoration that I was talking about earlier, that is part of the DEP permit that they, that they received separately. It's a condition of that permit for them to redo this bulkhead.
Yep.
They're actually giving back, because the building is over river now, they're giving that back and bringing that timber back to there, and in its place, they're restoring the tidal wet, as part of that DEP permit.
Great.
It's not part of this because it's part of the state.
The, thank you. Ignorant question, apologize. The seawall, does that have places in it where water from the property can flow throughout, or obviously, the seawall needs to be solid to not allow water in?
There, there's no outfalls on the property, so that's part of the stormwater management area, which we don't, because we don't have the outfalls in the property, we, we don't have a permit for that.
It's an oversheet design area.
Yeah, okay.
So, there's currently a failing bulkhead, and they're oversheeting with steel sheet piles that don't have any perforation to them, and then the, it's infilled with concrete for stability.
We negate the purpose.
If the mark go out, it kind of defeats the whole purpose.
Yeah, that makes sense, I just wanted to clarify that. And then, is there an, is, is there a slope to this property at all currently, or is it pretty flat?
It's very flat. There are some spot graves on here, and you can see three point seven, three point eight, three point six, four point four or so, it's within a foot or around.
But that's also going down from what looks like four point eight, five, four point six, closer to the western property line? Am I right on that?
Yeah, yeah, along the western property line, you go from five to four point three. So, if you look at all those spots, they're generally anywhere between, the majority of them are between like three point eight and four point.
Are there any leads, but it's certainly flat? Thank you. Are there, and is this property have any boat maintenance or places for boats to be cleaned or anything like that on it?
It handles it or the property.
Okay, great. And then, or the.
May have been done in the past in those buildings, but not now, it's just a pavilion just for the marina users.
Okay. And in the, in the crazy storm that could come, you know, and rain is, you know, we're getting an inch or two of rain, is the water flowing towards the pavilion now, which would make sense because it's flowing towards water? And then, if so, with no outfalls or anything, how is water, I know it's, I know it said it's gravel, I know water flows pretty easily through gravel, in those sticky circumstances water does flow in that direction, what's, are we relying a hundred percent on the singular proposed landscape area to catch and hold most of that water?
No, but what the goal on a property like this is, is to improve it, right? So, it's a longstanding property, right now, we have two roofs and we have a gravel parking lot. Right now, we're going to have one smaller roof, we're going to add some landscaping, and so we're making it better. So, if we had ten gallons before, now we might have eight gallons. So, we will get runoff to the river, but it's going to be better treated for quality because there's line paving that was in there before that treats stormwater quality, but also that absorbs some of the water for infiltration prior to it becoming surface runoff. So, we're actually reducing the volume of the surface runoff, and we're enhancing the water quality of.
Where, just from a neighbor standpoint, where would the water be running off to with the bulkhead there?
Well, the bulkhead is generally even, is there a little lip on the parking?
A little lip.
Yeah, so there might be a little lip to the parking lot, so there's a little curb, and it's generally flat along the edge. The times I've been, I don't think I've been in there in a crazy torrential rainstorm, but the gravel takes an amazing amount of water. If you had, you know, a six-inch rainstorm and that was saturated and was flowing toward it, it's going to go toward the wall, and it's either going to puddle up temporarily by the wall until it can soak in the ground, or it's going to find its way around the edges, just like.
Kind of that, because of the lap of grade, it's really almost not an issue, because you don't have all the water rushing in one corner of the property, pretty much settling as it comes out.
And right now, you have these liner buildings that are kind of trapping the surface runoff in there, too, which those will be gone, so there's more available water.
And it, and it is or is not necessary, advisable, best practices, you fill in the blank, on vegetation around the Riverside property line, or which would then ultimately be the, the bulkhead?
That's part of the restoration plan that they provided you with, correct?
Very difficult to get anything to grow on the landward side of the bulkhead.
And it's already gravel, which arguably, if you had a little trench, it would, you would make it gravel.
Right, right. Yeah, so here, you know, we're, again, restoring that tidal wetland, that's a pretty sustainable, adding five hundred plus square feet there and a couple hundred square feet plus there, plus arbivite. So, again, we're making all the steps that we can to add landscaping and make the, the stormwater runoff and quality better than it is today.
And all, and all of the plants are used to salt air, salt water?
I'm not a landscape designer, but.
Same as that, that does all of our property, so.
Seacoast, salt tolerant.
Yes.
Seacoast by their name, I assume they're experienced in salt tolerant varieties and things that would do well there, and Josh and his group want to make this attractive, that's why they're making this investment for their rating owners. So, if everything died out, they're going to replace it, not just going to leave it as overgrown brush.
Thank you very much.
And on the latest plans that Joe gave us, under construction notes, and number eight addresses the drainage.
Yeah, my bad, yeah. Great, thank you.
You're welcome. That's all we have.
Yeah, can we continue to go through the Jacobson one?
Yeah, we've got a couple left.
Yeah, we have number five.
Yeah, so five's just sediment controls during construction, you know, you see a lot of sediment on a flat site, but we've added straw waddles, and what he said in his comment, he just wanted us to show the detail.
Yeah.
Of the straw waddle, straw waddles are the cylindrical, it's like a fire hose, just straw, just to prevent the sediment from going toward the river, that's only during construction. And, let's see, so we included that detail, and then number six include the commission signature blockers down in the bottom right corner of all sheets we include there. Everything from there down, down is just the, the basically review of the flood plan.
Right.
And it's approved with the standard comments.
Correct, with the materials being used are as stated in requirements, which would be, what, what proofing requirements outlined in FEMA?
Yes, yeah, these are, these are standard comments, it's an approval, these are just like the standard regulated comments. Every person that's, every owner that proposed to do something in Old St. Harbor, before they can get a building permit, they need the flood review, right, from the consultant, then they get a building permit, and they also have to fill out a flood plan restriction form, which says that we are going to build it to these standards and we're going to maintain it to those standards, we're not going to do anything after the fact, that would.
The platform will be put in with resistant materials.
Yes, currently treated.
Yep. And then, obviously, you're aware of this because you've seen it before, but his ending comment, it would affect the proposed structure. The owner should be advised that any deviation from the information submitted with the flood area hazard permit application shall avoid the permit approval unless prior written approval is obtained from the land use office.
Yes, so even in, in additional protection to that, the way Old St. Harbor does the flood permit is, the owner has to pay a fairly substantial fee for them to review it, but then as part of that, Nate Jacobson's firm actually comes out and checks it. When it's, as it's being built and after it's built, they check it and they do an as-built, they make sure that, you can't get a certificate of occupancy for that structure until they check it and make sure that it's consistent or better than what was originally.
Any other questions from? Any other questions from? Yes, Jason.
Um, just clarification. Um, this existing bathroom trailer to remain. Can you clarify for me? Because it looks like it's where the previous building was. So is it getting moved?
It's a trailer on wheels.
Okay.
That's rented, right?
That we own.
Oh, that that they own, but it could be moved.
Okay.
You know, from here to there.
Okay.
We just chose that location uh over there off to the side. It's not blocking anything. It's not right next to the pavilion.
Yeah.
Um, for obvious reason, but it's, you know, it's nice. It's not like a porta potty. It's a nice restroom trailer with stuffs that we go up into. Um, yeah, and that's non-discharge and it's all self encapsulated. So there's no septic system or anything on the harbor.
Okay, and does that present any issues? Because it's on wheels, it doesn't present any issues from a FEMA standpoint, is that correct?
Uh, if a flood was coming, because that cost quite a bit of money, they took. They only make forty thousand dollars.
Okay.
So therein lies the incentive to remove it.
All right, thank you.
Any other?
Quick question, can you remind me what the surface is under pavilion?
Uh, probably.
Just around.
Yeah.
Okay.
There's no concrete or anything. Um, obviously it has a roof, so that'll shut off to the edges, but it is just purpose underneath what structures.
Um, so the uh, for the record, identify the correspondence that you have received. Uh, one of us from the Connecticut River area or Gateway Commission of uh, October twenty seventh. Um, also the uh, A R B uh, on November eleventh. Um, served to report to the zoning commission that members discussed the application in November tenth twenty twenty five A R B meeting and felt that the proposed building demolition and pavilion construction would serve to enhance the property. Um, Harbor Management Commission on October twenty seventh. Uh, commissioners acknowledged received the information and have no comments or objections. And the town of Old Sable Buildings Department um has been reviewed um plan for demolition and construction of open air pavilion. We will need a more detailed set of drawings to be able to move forward with the permit application and have no issues with the project as it's been presented. Um, statement of use. Um, one question I did have for you on on the uh, pavilion. Is it intended to rent uh to marina uh users only either for weddings or parties? Or is it strictly for voters, for users and enjoyment of being on the water?
Yeah, shared picnic area.
And um, under trash and recycling, rollaway barrels are what we're commonly have at our home that we just bolt to the street and direct to no damage to our company. So no, no dumpsters, no enclosures, anything of that, so. Um. Commissioners, anything else that might have missed? Um, not hearing that, I have to find my agenda. Um, I'd make a uh, like to make a motion to approve the safe harbor marina Ferry Point East application for special exception permit and coastal site plan review to demolish two existing buildings and construct a one thousand forty eight square foot open air pavilion twenty two Riverside Avenue, assessors map fifty nine, lot ninety six, Marine Industrial District, Gateway Conservation Zone, Coastal Area Management Zone with the following conditions, that the site plan be updated. Will include um what was handed to us this evening is the um plant um.
Landscape.
Landscape plan for um the ramp plantings and the northern buffer and to also include the uh, six um proposed um giant landscaping uh, abreviations uh, minimum six foot height.
Just a quick question, I know you're making. Did you make a motion?
I made a motion, has an second.
I got it, I have a question or a comment. Do we need to wait until it's seconded or no? Um, just the action.
We should wait till it's seconded.
I'm waiting for that.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Laura Gray. Any questions or comments?
So are we, are we approving or are we just opening a public hearing?
Uh, oh, good point. Um, I should close public hearing first. So I'll stretch, uh, I withdraw the motion that was just made. Um, join in with that. And uh, before I close the public hearing, I should also, if there's anybody in the audience or online wishing to speak in favor of or in opposition to, please uh, speak up now. No one in the audience? And anyone online, if you.
No.
We're like, is that for you? Okay, so there isn't anyone. So make a motion to close the public hearing for safe harbor marina Ferry Point East application for special exception permit.
Did we open the public hearing?
Yeah, we did.
Okay.
We did.
Just a question.
So uh, we're waiting on a second.
A second.
A second closing here. And is there any questions or comments? Not hearing any, um, I'm sorry, though. Did you have something else? Move to vote, all those in favor of closing public hearing signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, passes five zero zero. Um, are we uh, uh, able and willing to make um deliberate on this this evening or is there more information that we feel is necessary? I don't see where there is anything, so if anyone else does, prepare. So we're prepared to uh, vote on this this evening? So um, I will now make motion to approve safe harbor marina Ferry Point East application for special exception permit and coastal site plan review to demolish two existing buildings and construct one construct a one thousand forty eight square foot open air pavilion at twenty two Riverside Avenue, assessors map fifty nine, lot ninety six, Marine Industrial District, Gateway Conservation Zone, Coastal Area Management Zone. There are second.
Second.
Second if I might tell it. Any discussion? Not hearing any, we'll move on to a vote. Um, all those in favor of approval, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Proposed, same, passes five zero zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And you have all the history record, right?
Yes.
Thank you for bringing me back on. The item B, Reuto Properties, application for special exception use. To construct a seven thousand nine hundred and eighty eight square foot building for contractors flex space, including soil excavation, parking and septic at seven eleven Middlesex Turnpike, assessors map sixty two, lot twenty one. Applicant is Reuto Properties. Agent is Joe Wren. Action is to open public hearing to continue or close by twelve fifteen twenty twenty five or no later than January fourth twenty twenty six. Mr. Wren.
Good evening. Uh, once again for the record, Joe Wren, professional engineer of Inglewood uh, in town. Uh, with me and the other person left and the off audiences, Anthony Rudo. Uh, he's property owner and applicant uh, for this uh, project. Um, this property is located, you're all familiar, um, right by the Route nine North ramp. Route nine North ramp is right along the southern edge of the property here. And then Middlesex Turnpike or Route one fifty four going toward Essex within this direction. The property is is currently wooded. It's almost two eight, it's a little bit of five, two eight, because I landed. Um, it is in the uh, B four district. There was over the past six months to a year. Um, a lot of these properties in this area were shopping center zone, we call that. For some odd reasons, shopping center districts went out into this this more rural area. Um, but the properties were changed to more appropriate uh, gateway business B four district. Um, so the property now lies within the B four district, allows this type of use. And what Anthony is proposing is to do a contractor flex space. Um, I think it's just under eight thousand square feet. Uh, eighty three forty seven is the coverage. Um, and I think the the building is seventy nine, maybe around eight thousand square feet. Um, so just to orient you to the site, the gray here, the Middlesex Turnpike. Again, the ramp is along the southern edge. Um, this is a triangular piece of property. It's flat out in front and then the gray picks up to the northwest, uh, going up that hill in the back. Um, what is being proposed is to build the building in this location, which would be the southeast corner of the property. Um, and then all of this be a inch and a quarter crushed stone parking area, not paved um at all. And um, as far as, so this is not like building that's open to the public. Contractors would come, they would park their car there, they might take their utility truck um, from there, work for the day, come back and switch and so forth. But there's no customer or public coming here, parking and using it. So there's no retail uh, operation, really not even office. It's just strictly contractor uh, flex space. Um, the building was designed in accordance with uh, all the bump outs and all the special regulations for architectural review. Uh, Anthony was in front of F A R B on a preliminary basis just to get their feedback. So he can actually just building appropriately or give it design. Um, and then and then back formally to architectural review board. And you should have a letter or file from them um stating that they believe that with that building type and that design and that location would enhance the property in that particular area. Um. The soils on the sites are really nice infiltrating sand and gravel, really well drained, very deep groundwater tables, um, very deep ledge uh, in that area that's proposed to be developed. So with the inch and a quarter uh, crushed stone areas around the building and in the parking area, the stormwater runoff will go right through that instead of running off on the surface, get into the sandy gravel below and just infiltrate into the soil. So that's how the site is designed. If we're all paved, of course, all that runoff would have to be collected in a point and then treated that way. But this allows it to spread out and infiltrate evenly across the whole type of site. Um, so the driveway would be generally at this location. Come in, it would open up. There would be a few parking spaces in front of the building, again, for the uh, operators of the spaces. There are garage doors all along the front, um, so folks could park a vehicle inside of the building as well. Um, so we just demonstrate that, we show a little car symbols on here, parking spaces, just to just to allocate, excuse me, the the seven required parking spaces for the use. Um, and we really could show them anywhere. We just figured that this is gonna be generally how it's mostly utilized on a daily basis. Um, this is a state highway to D O T Road, Connecticut Route one fifty four. So we are working with D O T. Coming around this curve from the north to the south. Uh, we're working with the D O T to plan the best location for the driveway for the the maximum site distance to be able to see a car coming in that direction. Um, the D O T won't formally approve until we get local approval. So we need zoning to approve um first and then we give them a copy of our plan plus the zoning approval and then they'll formally review the plan and make recommendations and so forth. The driveway, since the more north we go with the driveway location, the more into that curve that we get um, going toward Essex, you could see it more on that plan. Um. So, but we can't come any further south right now because there is what's called a D O T non-access line because of the Route nine ramp. There's a non-access line right up to the area where we have the driveway, which means you can't access the state road from your private property through that line. So we have it as far south right now as possible. Uh, working with the D O T, that may be able to slide. If we work with their rights and we division, that may be able to slide a little bit more into the south. Um, if not, we leave it here. Need to do some grading or retaining wall in this area to get the proper sight line uh, looking to the north. But it is achievable. This plan shows that it is achievable. Um, it just gets better the more we can push this to the south. So that's what we're working with the D O T on. Um, the blue areas on this plan um might be more difficult to see on the electronic or digital file, but the light blue areas in this area just recommends or um represents areas where snow storage. So if the area was plowed, we have a retaining wall along this back corner supporting the slope. If the this area was plowed, we can't plow up against the building, so we store snow in these areas temporarily. If it melts, of course. Um, and that's that's required by zoning regulations as well to identify those areas. Uh, we have very small septic use usage and really good soil on the property. So we show a septic system over in this area, which has been approved by the health district. Um, we're not in a cam zone here for once, right? We're not in a flood zone, unlike the other two applications. Um, so we're we're high and dry, there are no wetlands, there's no flood zones, there's no camp. Uh, it's fairly straightforward. Everything, we comply with all of the setbacks um, all the way around. We are leaving uh, vegetation. Uh, all all this area here, this is the clearing limits that we need for grading. So all of this area will remain designated. And then we have uh, minimum of seven street trees that are required along the frontage. There are some trees uh, through there, they're mostly kind of scrub trees. There might be a couple that could be salvaged, uh, but we do show the required seven tree trees there spaced out forty feet as required. And then along the southerly edge, we have a, since this is the ramp and there's there are there's forests or woods between the property line and the paved portion of the ramp. So all those trees are on state property and all those would remain too. So we're kind of surrounded by trees on three sides. We have the street trees across the front. And then Anthony is also proposing a solid uh, seven foot high fence across the frontage too. So there'll be a twenty five foot landscape area from, not from the street, from the property line. So here is the street line, right? And you can see the edge of the road where the gray is. Um, the scale on this plan is one inch equals thirty feet. So you can see there's probably fifteen to twenty feet or more in here that is already D O T property that would stay green. Um, then he's got a ten foot area here where all these street trees are and then he has this fence. And then on the backside, uh, or excuse me, fifteen foot area where the street trees are, then he's got his fence and then on the backside of the fence is another ten feet to make up for the twenty five. So what your zoning regulations requires, twenty five from the street line. But in this case, there's another fifteen to twenty five feet between the roads. So you're really not only getting twenty five, you're getting twenty five plus fifteen to twenty five. So you're getting like anywhere from forty to fifty feet of green space from the edge of the road to where the parking lot can actually start. So all these areas that are are blue along the frontage, those would all be green areas, non, non-parking, non-driving surface and those will all be uh, you know, landscaped or lawn grass area. Uh, right where the uh, septic system is. Um, we do have public water ends to the south on the other side of Route nine. So we do have a well uh, in this location that would serve the building. Again, just limited use, some small sink, uh, a small maybe common bathroom or two uh, in the bathroom, but that's it. There's no kitchen, there's no apartments, no big water usage or anything. So small septic, small well water usage. Um, as far as lighting, the only lighting is on the building itself, so there's no site lighting. Um, and we indicate those locations uh, in red on the plan. Again, that was looked at by A R B. We provide specs and details of that. They're full cutoff, dark sky compliant. They're basically at the door locations around the building for safety and security. And they're most likely motion inspectors, right? They'll just go on when necessary and not on all day long or all night long. The retaining wall, as I mentioned before, is required along the backside to hold back the slope. So we have enough room for the building and the parking. Um, we did extensive soil testing on the site and it's all sand and gravel, even going up the slope. The overburden on the slope is is nice, well-drained, sinking gravel area. Um, the areas that we need to grade back here uh, will be open and then graded um, to get to the elevations required. That area will be ceded, but it will also be allowed to overgrow uh, over time as well. So it'll be grasses, tall grasses, some trees and shrubs over time and then just. So it'll be grasses, tall grasses, some trees and shrubs over time and just regenerate. As far as stormwater on the site, I already kind of touched on that a little bit before. The grade comes down from the northwest toward the southeast, and then this is a big flat area now down at the bottom of the hill. So all stormwater, again, is sandy gravel, so a lot of it absorbs into the ground. Any runoff now would come down to the base and then absorb into that sandy gravel soil. So we're hoping to, we've designed this to maintain that drainage. We can't have it, any, any surface runoff come over the retaining wall for the rest of the site. So what we've done in this case is we've created a swale on the west side, so any surface water that comes down here would just be collected in a swale and then come out into this area. And in this area here, we have a, a stone trench, so that the water can come down and then infiltrate into the underlying soil in that stone trench. And then on this side, the, there's a high point here, so that goes that way to the south. This portion goes to the northeast, down behind the wall, and then ends up in this rain garden here, basically a planted depression that allows the water to accumulate and then soak in or infiltrate into the underlying soils over time. So that's how the runoff from the slopes, that's how we're treating that. And then as far as from the building, which is the only impervious that's been proposed on the site, no guard, right? It's shutting off, shutting off to the edges. And then all of this light gray area, the dotted area, is, like I said before, it's a minimum of twelve inches thick, an inch and a quarter crushed stone, which absorbs the water very quickly, as you know, and that is over, any topsoil we remove, so that is over the very well-drained sand below. So the water will be able to infiltrate in through the stone and then infiltrate into the gravel, equal or better than it does today, because right now there's some topsoil and leaf litter sitting on top, which slows enters the ability of the water to go in the ground a little bit. So now we'll have the crushed stone over that sand and allow it to absorb into the site and the underlying soils rather than runoff as stormwater. So with the infiltration, the gravel trench and the rain garden, again, we're meeting the water quality essentials on this, and then also reducing or making equal the water quality volume coming off of, out of the site. There is a sign, we provided a detailed sign right near the entrance, and again, there will be contractor flex space, so six compartments within the building, so it'll say up on top and basically green the address, 711 Mill 6 Turnpike, and then it will just have tenant, tenant boards below that. And if they, if the tenant board needs anything special, they of course would go back to ARB for a sign application at that point, but this sign was reviewed and approved by ARB, so long as it stays very similar to this, they go after, back to ARB. No lighting on the sign. Again, the only lighting is attached to the building and basically at entrances and entrances.
But that sign's supposed to be six feet, and that for the supporting structure?
Uh, the note, the note correct.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so it, the sign, the person, so it'd be down two inches, so that has to be seventy-two.
Seventy-two, perfect.
From the ground to the top, so that, that's an adjustment of ten inches to that.
Okay.
Jacobson's office reviewed this as well, we've got a letter dated today. So we actually wrote some pretty quick responses, pseudos, and I can give you.
We are not.
You don't have that.
You don't have, you don't have, but I have.
Yeah.
It's actually online.
So you.
Yeah, it's actually, it's actually online, so I can give you this paper copy too, once I'm done going through it. And we actually have dated also today our responses for those comments, which I'll go through now, so that'll be part of the record, but then I can give you those. But it is online, that's where we got our, so we'll get, we'll get something in the mail this week though. We usually look online to see what's available before the meeting, if they're able to pull that off. It probably came in late, so I didn't see it, it's probably end of the day, dated today. So there are six comments. So the first one deals with the drainage. So it says, while it is noted on the drawing that there's sufficient void volume in the twelve-inch depth of crushed stone that we talked about extensively in part one, to retain the required water quality volume, no calculations have been provided regarding the pre and post-development analysis as required in the zoning regulations. However, since the site drains toward Middlesex Turnpike and into the Connecticut DOT right-of-way, this falls within their jurisdiction requiring their review and approval. So basically with that comment, what he's saying is that if you look at all the elevations, everything eventually comes toward Middlesex Turnpike. Anthony and I both could tell you that with the sand and gravel, if you go out there in the heaviest rainfall, you won't see any water coming toward Middlesex Turnpike, but that's just the, the way the elevations show. But it falls within their jurisdiction, so again, after land use approvals, we submitted to DOT and then they reviewed the drainage along the, the sightline. But our, our response to that was, yes, we will be addressing all the DOT's concerns next as, as phase two of this. But part of our response too is what I had mentioned before, and any excess runoff, first of all, we have this slope contained in the rain garden there, and then the stone infiltration trench along this edge and that swale that I mentioned before, and that anything, the only impervious area is the root, so that sheds off to the edges. Anthony has another building similar to this, a little smaller on Schoolhouse Road that we permitted a few years ago, and use the same process, we use the same inch and a quarter crushed stone in the building, and it sheds off, and there's never puddle on the ground.
Had more issues before we.
Right, yeah. Yeah, there were more issues on the existing with no building than when we built the site up, added the stone and added the building. So it works very, very effectively. He says in his comment that it's fine for the water quality volume, he was, his question was more about pre versus post. Right now it's a wooded area, it's no longer going to be a wooded area, but we're arguably actually improving the infiltration ability of the soil by using the stone as a conduit to the sand and gravel versus the upstones and the leaf litter that's there. So response to that comment, we feel that with all those three items that the excess is taken care of, and anything else that's brought up from DOT will be addressed in the future directly with the DOT.
DOT overrides Sabre's requirements?
Um, they do if they're stricter, when they're usually stricter.
Right.
So whenever there's a state right-of-way involved, hence the driveway location, that goes right to the state versus, also it doesn't really have much say on that, the state, because it's a state road, they will determine that, and any drains that they're concerned that they will make requirements for that as well. Number two says, the proposed carstone drive is much larger in area than what is necessary to provide the required parking and building access. So what he means by that is, we come in here, drew a straight line, just so folks had enough room to turn in and out of the building and so forth. He's talking about, you know, really this area over here, that's excess, and his concern with that is about outside storage. So Anthony's here, I don't think he anticipates much outdoors storage, right?
We know how people drive nowadays, more room, the better.
Yeah.
But, no, but your maneuvering to get in with a trailer, swing to the right, use all this space and back straight up and.
Right.
I mean, you see schoolhouses, there's nothing to store and.
So Anthony's point is you come in with a twenty-four-foot-long trailer, pull in here, in order to back in that space, you need this swing area to back in for that parking lot. But he doesn't anticipate any outdoor storage, but even with that, the, as I mentioned before, all of this is wooded, okay? And then this area along the ramp is wooded as well. Then along the frontage, again, any remaining good, healthy trees will stay, but we're adding the seven trees, plus, as I had mentioned, across the front, he's proposing a seven-foot-high fence along the whole frontage within the landscaped area. So the site will be pretty much self-contained and screened from all sides.
That's kind of why we shifted the building, do so that when you're driving down the road, instead of it being like this, looking like a big massive building, it looks a lot smaller.
Yeah, Anthony's point is driving by, you see this edge, you know, mostly you see the width rather than the length. If it was this way, it would be harder to fit it on the site, but also you would see the, the long axis of the building in the driving direction, so it's perpendicular to the driving direction.
So if you had a tenant that wanted to store equipment or vehicles outside, would you tell them no?
No, no, be strict with, no detailers, all that kind of stuff, because they're a mess. I ran over at Finkel Day too, and there's like a boat guy who rents next door, and then next you know, there's boats all outside and this and that. Usually like electrician buddy, he brings his truck, leaves one truck outside, takes his work truck out, goes out for the day, comes back, gets in his truck, leaves. Because nobody wants to leave their vehicles outside anyway, especially on that side, dark highways right there, they can come in, rob something and take a, like happens on custom driving.
So no anticipated outdoor.
No, and I'm, I'm strict, like I don't like things dirty, and I know how people get, next you know, it's like all strictly right and least, like, hey, this is what you get, outside spot for when you're, you know, someone working with you or something like that. And then, I mean mainly, I'm using another bay for myself, and then it's got like a couple of plumber, HVAC guy, electrician, you know? Because once I built this building over here on Schoolhouse, next you know, it's like, oh, you got room, you got room, you got room, because no one has any space, the Sony's all booked up, everybody else is all booked up, so for the contractors, there's no room for anyone to put in, you know?
Yeah. It's, it's a very much needed use in this area, everyone wants old Sabre, because we're thirty minutes into London, thirty minutes into A, thirty minutes in Middletown, we're at the bottom of Route 9, it's very convenient, on and off, and contractors that work at our houses and our buildings, they need space like this to be able to house themselves. But I think, you know, the question went back to outdoor storage, so Anthony's saying no anticipated outdoor storage.
So they, you know, they had a machine outside for one night or something.
They come in there very early.
They pull something out, they pull something in and whatever.
Refrases, no permanent outdoor.
Yeah, yeah. No, like, oh yeah, you can put your RV there or this or that.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Would you be agreeable to a, a condition?
Yeah.
No outdoors?
No permanent.
No permanent outdoor storage.
Permanent is a key word, like you said, something could be there for a day or two.
They still want.
Permanent long-term?
Say more, more than.
I guess, yeah.
Right, you just identified more than seven days?
Yeah, yeah.
Because then it's long-term, right? Is that my problem? So just say seven days, not saying store more than seven days, right?
Yeah. Might not be the next man up for a date.
The, now Anthony does keep this property, he's very meticulous, I must say. So the end of number two, he talks about the snow storage areas, and he didn't see them, like I pointed out to you, they are on the plan that he reviewed, I think he looked at the digital PDF online, and it's harder to see in the digital file, but it is on the plan in, in those, those areas. Because we have the retaining wall across the front, and you're not really getting a plowed truck around the back, these two corners, the northeast and southeast corners are the main areas for snow storage. Number three says, please indicate if there will be any floor drains, and there are no floor drains in the building, there's not even anywhere to drain them, they only are a nightmare. You know, something drains into the floor drain and it becomes a nightmare, so it's a concrete slab and there are no floor drains, so that, that's what our response says. Number four talks about the, talks about the sightline, so I touched on this before. So a car sitting, coming out, exiting the site, looking to the right, you could see very far, you could see through the bridge or Route 9. Middlesex Turnpike gets flat and it's a straight shot, so there's plenty of sightline looking to the south. To the north, again, we get into that curve, and the more we come, originally we wanted driveway to be up here, come into the site that way, but it was just getting too far into the curve and it was cutting back too far into the hill, so we moved it down as far as we could south, because then we get into that DOT non-access line I talked about before, and without going through their right-of-way department and getting us to be able to be within that non-access line, this is as far south as we can put it. And what that requires is some grading, if there's ledge there, we can get down to the ledge or build a variable height retaining wall in this area to hold back the, to make sure that we have that required sightline distance that DOT requires, which is over five hundred feet in this area, so we need to be able to see that far. So he talks about that, and he talks about the retaining wall, that's necessary to achieve that, and again, that's strictly within the DOT property, all, all of it is within the DOT property, so that is something, that's the main thing that DOT be looking at once they receive it. And they will not approve the curb cut on their state road until we get something that's acceptable to them. This right here would be acceptable, it just requires Anthony to build a retaining wall, and there's a utility pole in there as well. So our preference is to move it even just a little bit, even the driveway with the south helps, because the way the curve is, it comes back into the road, and it takes the line away from that higher ground, so we're working on that right now with the DOT. Usually when we plan these projects, like Anthony and I met Rick Chapman, who's the DOT traffic engineer from District Two, we met him out there, and we looked at this, and we did the pre-planning so that we at least were in the right ballpark, before we proposed something that he would say completely, completely no to. So that's how we know about the non-access line and what to do there, and the sightline look in the north. So number five says, with regard to erosion control measures, we would recommend that temporary check dams be placed within the proposed swales and erosion control blankets on the proposed cut slopes of gradient of the swales and the retaining wall. So here, like I mentioned before, we have the retaining wall to hold back the slope, these are cut slopes going up there, so what he's recommending is erosion control blankets on here, so we, we had it on the plan, we had it on the plan, included in one of the, in one of the notes on the erosion settlement pageant we told narrative, but we didn't have the, the detail for it, so what we have said in our response is that we will, it's already in the note, we pointed out where it is in the note, and that will include the details, so that the erosion control blanket is on these slopes. I mentioned before, these swales along the back of the retaining wall, and usually every seventy-five feet, these are pretty short runs, every seventy-five feet, we'll just put a crushed stone check dam, so it just slows the water down and infiltrates it, so it, it doesn't come all down unimpeded to, to the bottom. We felt that these areas were short enough, they're only a hundred feet or less, but he's just suggesting that we put the stone check dams incrementally, one or two in those areas, so we will, we put in the comment that we will add those. Again, it's just a recommendation, but we will, we will add those. And then number six are just minor miscellaneous comments, A and B. A is, consideration should be given to providing ballards in front of the parking spaces facing the building, so we just have three parking spaces there facing the building, and again, it's just a suggestion, minor recommendation, and it's, it's really up to, up to Anthony, but there are three spaces, three ballers. Do it.
Would be great.
We, the bottom edge of the building is not concrete, right?
Yeah.
It's, it's blocked, or it's just metal building?
Oh, no, oh, no, that's metal, yeah, metal.
Yes, it's a metal building.
So I usually put in the corners, near the doors.
Yeah, so in front of those three, we have wheel stops, but he's recommending putting a baller, so someone doesn't go into the building. So it sounds like Anthony is agreeable to add that, and again, it's a minor miscellaneous comment that's drafted at number six. So we will add those. In B, there was a one oh six elevation contour line in the parking lot that he said should be added somewhere here, and of course, we will add that to the plan too. So based on all these comments, a couple of things are dealt with already, a couple of things are DOT-specific, really the only things that would be added are the check dams and the erosion blanket detail, it's already on the plan, but add the detail, and then the three ballards in that one contour line was really the, the only. It's already on the plan, but add the detail and then the three bollards. Um, and that one contour line was really the the only thing. We already have the zoning permission approval blocks on here, but we um, we have ARB, we have health approval. And our next step is DOT. So with that, do you have any questions for Anthony or myself? Um, we provided architectural plans for the building. Uh, Anthony gave me some rendering before as well. That just show the coloring and do the building more justice and have a, yeah. I could pass these around for you too.
Can you give us a copy of your response to Jacobson, please?
I'll give you Jacobson's letter too, just saying that. Jacobson's letter responses. So the the building from the front with the garage doors, um, breaks in the roof lines and the break in the facade are all per the special guidelines in the architectural regulations and all, again, all.
So you mean the articulation department?
Yes, um, that was part of the original design. Um, and this was just a different perspective view from the east, the other was from the west. Uh, and then a rear view as well. So I could pass those around or provide those to the the record, but again, it was all reviewed by ARB and you have the letter in your file saying it's consistent with all that. So there's a bump in the roof vertically and there's also a bump on the north and south façades.
And the front to back, I remember, is approximately forty feet if I remember correctly, so there's no articulation needed on the side?
Uh, it's sixty feet, but there's a, um, if you look on there, there are some articulations and covered pawnings over the doors and so forth on that side. Uh, and also overhang.
Missionaries, questions here? Just got a couple of questions, um.
And apologize if you had discussed this. There's two, one or two proposed bollard between the two snow, uh, accumulation areas. What what that part almost looks like a?
Those protect the well.
Oh, well, okay, I see that.
That's required.
Yeah, thank you. And then isn't, is it either standard procedure or more of, I guess, like a building, uh, structural, uh, preservation issue to have bollard at the corners of the doors so that if a contractor is backing in and doesn't know how to drive, they just ran and run into the bollard versus the building?
Yeah.
And you indicated that you were gonna have those there?
Well, we had, we, or we added them at the schoolhouse.
Yeah, yeah.
Just because, yeah, I think.
But the difference at schoolhouse, though, is you could drive all the way around that building. Six degrees here, we only, we have ten feet here, so there's, there is a, there is an overhead door there, but might be to get like a small skid stair or something out of there, right? There's not a vehicle coming in there, but since we're adding the three for Jacobson's, ones at the corner already, because that's where the parking. I'm just talking on the sides of each of the doors.
So you're looking at garage doors on each side?
Or some sort of buffer to just protect the building so that you don't have to have that maintenance over time?
Yeah.
That's all, I was just.
Not opposed to just adding, yeah.
Yeah, question. Yeah, so, um, sounds like Anthony is not opposed to adding bollards at the corners and then the edges of the garage doors, so. And thank you, and it was just a question. And then for, there's a, um, what I keep, questions in my head. So for the driveway, there's a, there's a building across the street, is it just gonna align? You think those two driveways will align? And if they do, is that something that I'm sure DOT will have to look at that as like a traffic control or anything?
Um, it actually does, it might look like it aligns, but where that pole, what pole number we line up on?
It's off, that driveway is more.
Yeah, further down.
Yeah.
Because we, if we're that far down, we really can't go into that space. That's that, uh, DOT buffer.
Eight seventeen is right next to the driveway, right? Yep, that's what I'm seeing, eight seventeen. Eight seventeen pole is right next to our driveway and their, their driveway is more down.
Oh, they're closer to eight sixteen, right? Yeah, one either way, uh.
I know there's not a ton of traffic there anyway, so in terms of in and outs, so just wondering if that. Yeah, the road's pretty wide, there's a pretty wide solar there too. Um, so they're not, the DOT is not opposed to having a cut here, we just have to show them how we achieve segment. Yeah, and then I think my final question is, I guess, two in one. The the ten-foot landscape perimeter buffer, is that necessary up on the, I guess, northern and western portion if that's remaining wooded? Or is that just, you just left that in as part of a ten-foot? Yeah, we just show the perimeter buffer to show that it's never exceeded. But that's not being.
It's required, but the fact that it's, it's wooded. It's currently meets that requirement.
Yeah, exactly.
If it was future development, they'd still have to maintain that, and if they cleared it to the property line, they would have to maintain the landscape.
And then the the house that's just over the border, there's, um, the trees and everything, I I think there's what, like a thirty or forty foot elevation difference, so noise and everything, we're not a.
Uh, you go all the way up there, you can almost see the river.
The, yeah, the building slab is proposed at one oh five and the contour up in that area closer to the house I see is like one sixty-five. So the base of the house is more than sixty feet higher than. So any noise from the place will probably get buffered one by elevation and two trees and all that stuff. Yeah, and the other interesting thing is that property is also in the gateway business zone. It's on a residential zone property, it's just, it's a house, a non-forming house and the people, so. Okay.
But I contacted, we went out and changed the zone, and we did that, that guy was real cool, some guy in the west side, we got second house, but it was nice.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
I have a couple of questions. So this whole area is gonna remain wooded with the exception of these, you call them, hut slopes?
Yeah, so the, see the bumpy line, that's the, that's the projected clearing limit, so everything north and west of that line will remain as it is today. Um, for installing this wall, we need to catch a slope, a normal, um, slope is either two to one or three to one. So we have to chase it back a certain amount in order to achieve that standard slope. Um, so yes, the trees will be cleared in that area to construct the wall and raid that area behind, but then it'll be grass and seeded. They're already mineral blanket, and it will become short grass and tall grass and then some new vegetation take over, so eventually it'll be like new growth. New growth there, there's no.
There's trees in there. Like I'm trying to see which ones we can keep, but it's like, the more you look at, it's like, that one probably, that one's one good, you know?
Yeah, so. Yeah, there's nothing really overly significant in there. There are some specific trees, but no matter what it is in this area, that will stay as exactly as it is today. In this area, that will be cleared, that slope will be seeded and then allowed to become green again.
Retaining, yeah.
Yep.
And then, um, you also mentioned a fence.
Yeah.
Do we know what that looks like or do we care about that? What the fence looks like?
Either gonna be, not like a, either kind of a vinyl or like that dog ear wood.
Is it wood would look more?
ARB, a solid fence or?
Yeah.
Or is it a?
Soft.
Soft.
So ARB was saying wood would look more natural, but with a kind of barn. I feel, you know?
Yeah, the callout is seven foot high, solid wooden fence.
For like a dog year, so it's not like that cheap stock, they it's cut a little bit different, it looks a little bit better.
And plus, you know, again, as there's a lot of green between the edge of the road and the property line, and then there's fifteen feet with the street trees, then the fence and then ten feet behind that, that is still green.
Is it similar to the fence you have over in schoolhouse?
Uh, that's the vinyl, but make it like that, where the trees, the fence, and more green on the back. We have a vinyl fence on schoolhouse, this would be wooden fence and seven feet high. Um, but similar setup is what Anthony's saying, where you have.
But behind, behind the trees.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, so there is something.
Right, and if there's any like nice decent straight trees worth saving in that DOT to my property, I'd like to keep them, you know?
And the fence will be on both sides of the, um, entrance?
Yeah, you can, if you look closely, you can see the symbol, there's a straight line with squares.
Oh, okay.
That's the symbol for the fence. There's a callout um, there as well, and then on the other side, you can see it right behind the trees as well.
Here, we'll show the box fence, okay?
Yep.
Did you say that if you move the driveway for yourself, you don't have to build the upper retaining wall or change the upper retaining wall?
Uh, no, some, some level of retaining wall will be required there because it's, that's a very steep slope coming down to the edge of the road there. Um, but the more south you go, the less you get out of that curve and the better this line becomes. Um, so when that's here, this swings in a little bit and it just saves, even it just moving five or ten feet here, saves like five feet in elevation. Um, so it's very sensitive to that, the more we move it this way, the the more out of that slope we become. When we had the driveway up here, way into the slope.
Okay, it just moves it?
Yeah, it shifts it like that because of the curvature of the road. Uh, but right now we can, because it's not access, so it's a whole process. We have to go through the rights of way group at the DOT to allow us to break the non-access line, and he said we have a really good case for it because we're approving our Sabre. So potentially, there's a utility pole there too, so we'd have to get on the other side of the utility pole. Um, and here and enter the property that way, or this can be done too, it's just more of a retaining wall for Anthony to build.
But that's up by where Essex Roads feeds into it?
Yeah, that's right here, that, this is that intersection, yes, correct, yeah. And would be, Anthony's hoping to do like the modular block wall, like, um, uh, fifty-two Spencer plane that was just paved, the big medical building, and we did a uh, crossing the storage by the highway at Coles, that area.
Right.
And the access driveway going down, and they use those big like stone face blocks. And that's what he's planning on. We actually have the detail in the plan, that's what he's proposing for this wall. And whatever wall he has to do here, I would imagine would be the same, the same or similar block to that, so it at least has a.
Or if you hit natural rock, right, it's just.
Yeah, and that's the idea.
All that, it's all natural, nice looking rock, then you just.
Yeah, and that could be, could be possible. Um, if you take off some of the soil there and you hit a nice, a rock face. That's the cheap one. It looks nice. It does look nice. Um, so that's what we're hoping, that's really the only thing, but that's outside, you know, again, outside of the zoning regulations.
Casey, your question?
Oh, uh, I had a couple of questions. Um, for the retaining wall that's on the, for that retaining wall.
This one?
Yeah, the, yeah, um, at what point do, is there an actual design for the retaining wall? Like, what's the maximum height and how?
Um, so they're pre-engineered blocks, so as long as you fill them to, um, specifications. And on sheet three of three, the easy block wall, so we actually have uh, the specification there, they they have keyways. Um, and little bumps on top of the block, and as they're stacked, it naturally batters the wall back, you can see how it is here. And that makes it structurally, structurally conforming and compliant. Once you get above a certain height, there's fabric geotextile that you have to put between the blocks and hold it back into the slope, but that's only if you get over a certain height, and that's all specified.
So what do you?
Mafia, sorry, the mafia style?
Um, no, much better looking than mafia blocks that has the stone face.
But that kind.
The texture.
Kind of that, but stamped, like a stone face, that make it look like.
Yeah, and mafia blocks are just flat, so they don't have a keyway. And structural, and this holds them together and puts that natural batter into the wall, so it holds them back. It doesn't, sorry.
Okay, no, so what's the maximum height of the wall?
It's probably at the height point, so it goes from one oh six to one eighty.
Two, one twenty.
So twelve to fourteen feet maximum height.
Fourteen, okay.
But then it steps down from there, so if you look at it, it comes all the way down to, you know, four feet and two feet on the northeast farm.
Okay.
And then it comes out to that four and two feet on the other. So we just stack the blocks, so it'll go like this all the way down.
Okay.
Till we get back to grade.
Okay, thank you. Um, one other question, or a couple of other questions, um. You have crushed stone, that's, that's fine. Um, I just want to make sure, is there a way? I don't want the crushed stone to start creeping into the rain garden area. Is there a way that that is contained or can be contained? Um, I know if if there are only vehicles backing up there on occasion, that's probably not as big of a concern, but if you start having a little more activity in there.
Yeah, I mean, there could be a couple, I'm sure Anthony's gonna find a couple of boulders.
Okay, okay, yeah, or even something like adjacent to the rain garden to.
Yeah, between the rain garden and the parking area where we have the snow storage, we could drop a couple of boulders. That will physically prevent, prevent into there. I don't want, I don't like that over bollard a site.
Yeah.
Already adding like twenty of them, so.
No, I'm thinking more of, you know, with with rainfall or whatever, we have displaced gravel that trickles down towards the rain garden and starts blocking it up over time.
The, the, so this stone is inch and quarter stone and it's pretty hefty. The rain, the rain doesn't move it like keystone.
Okay.
On a driveway, so it's, it's pretty chunky and it's all compacted with a roller, so it's it's compact, but it's very porous because of the size of the stone.
Okay.
Uh, so the only way I see encroachment is by plowing, and that's a snow storage area.
Okay.
So that's why if you have a vertical barrier like a a boulder, they're not gonna drive the plow into the boulder.
Okay, makes sense, perfect.
Maybe we can just add two boulders in that area.
Okay, perfect. Um, and then, uh, the only other, the other two questions I have are, um, do, do your tenants ever do work on their vehicles? Their units, like change oil?
That's why I don't want like any detailers or boat mechanics or boat shrink wrap guys.
Okay.
So they're just family.
Always. Okay.
Yeah, now you tell them at least like broken down where you can't do X, Y, and Z, responsible for this, and stains on the, you know, concrete and.
Okay.
All clean guys that are professional, they want to go there, have shellings, spare, you know, tools, parts, whatever.
Sure, okay, okay. Um, and then, last thing was, uh, just a minor thing. Um, can we have the actual building height called out on the elevations on final plans? Because I know it's estimated based on, um, the elevations and they called out the, um, the wall height. But not the.
You don't want to be.
And we usually ask them to. We usually ask them for that, I don't see that, and then, no, there it is to scale.
Yeah.
But just to be called out on there. Um, up to the, up to the E overhang. They do have that on the right side of that gene, that eighteen foot nine. And then the only added pieces from there up to the peak.
Sure, yeah.
Um, and that's a, that's a four twelve pitch. Um, over about thirty-five feet, so it's, um, you do have the height on the zoning table, uh, as well. So that's, it's about twenty-nine feet. So we're allowed thirty-five, we're at twenty-nine right now, so even if we're a foot over, we're still well within the vert. So you can have it there, it certainly could be placed on that line as well on the architect one. Like I said, it is to scale, so if you scale it, it's exact, right? Since we're six feet under, I don't think it's that close. No, six feet under, it's just.
Anybody else? I think that's it. Couple of questions for you, um. Your calculation on the parking is seven. Interesting as to why you placed four of them inside the building?
Um, we have garage doors, um, so that's typically allowed by zoning permissions, including the storm, to have parking spots inside, like Anthony explained the use, they come with their personal vehicle, their company utility vehicles inside from overnight. They swap the vehicles, but there is inside and take the utility vehicle out, so it is a legitimate parking space. We do have more than four overhead doors, but we showed three on the outside and four on the inside. We could show them over against the wall, but again, it's a crushed stone parking lot and we would need meals of office randomly over here and that would just completely mess up the plowing that's gonna happen on the site. So we built three in front of the building in the areas where there are no overhead doors, you can see those are strategically placed, so they're not in front of an overhead door. Um, and then we placed the the four on the inside, so they're out, because that's most likely how the building is going to operate and be used. There might even be six inside, um, or more, um, instead of using the outside parking spaces, but we do show the seven that are required. Every out for.
But in reality, won't someone pull up in their personal car, leave it outside, go inside and get their vehicle and leave? Like, they're not gonna pull out their vehicle and pull their car into the space inside.
The doors are.
Buddy at a custom drag does it every day, and I do it. And then I do it, I play foot flop back and forth just to keep things out of the way and shut.
Okay.
Plus the doors are really.
I'm also crazy and keep three trucks inside and paint it there.
How wide are the doors in the building? Uh, three more doors.
Fourteen by.
Yeah, they're big, they're. They're double. So if they're fourteen, you could get, you could park alongside and take the other one back out.
Fourteen.
Yeah, fourteen foot wide doors.
And what's the length of the front profit line?
Uh, good question. So we should have frontage up there, so we have door hundred and nine, I think forty-seven. Along the state highway.
And trees are required at every forty feet.
Correct, so we have a tree line that we're keeping in here.
Identified tree line is the dented squid, squidly line as it approaches.
That's correct, yep.
To the far, what would that be?
North.
North corner, yeah. So the calculation starts at that squidling line to the south.
Uh, yes, and then we just went every forty feet, other than the driveway, and we spaced these trees out evenly.
But the, the reasoning there isn't any more than what the front line is, is because you're leaving that forest.
The tree line, yep.
Correct.
Yep, correct.
And we're gonna see what some people do.
So we have in the landscaping, fatal air, front landscaping in the third row down here. We have, there's a hundred and forty feet plus or minus of three lines to remain. And then in the remainder, we have seven acres or more remaining.
So if there was any change to that part of the property where you eliminated that forest line, you would have to then go back in and put in around forty feet, another tree.
Correct, correct. Yep, there would actually have to be either three, depending on the overall calculation, either three or four trees placed in there. But right now there's a wood line out for the road and that's all the verb. If that did change, like you said, how much it ever changed, every forty feet requires a new tree.
Right. Um, for the record, just that, we had comments from ARB, which everyone's familiar with. Their only call out was the commission noted that the tenant signpost should not exceed six feet, which we already discussed. The fire department doesn't see any problems or issues with it. And we never did get anything from the Department of Transportation on that, that went out. And Chris followed up with him after the thirty-five days and they still didn't get a response. What you indicated earlier.
Indeed, yeah.
Just for the record, so.
Yeah, this is not imposed zones on.
No, it's on the river.
Right, right.
If there's no other questions or comments, I make a motion to close public hearing. Sorry.
Wait, let's see, anybody, there's somebody on?
Is, is there anyone online or in the audience wishing to speak in favor of or in opposition to this application, please raise your hand. I don't see any hands raised online, there's nobody in the audience. So I continue with the motion to close public hearing. Seconded by Derek Kennedy, any discussion? I have hearing any, I think a vote. All those in favor of closing public hearing for the application, re- re- you go properties, application for special exception. Constructed seven thousand nine hundred eighty-eight square foot building, the contractor's flux base, including soil activation, parking and septic. Like seven eleven middlesex ten five. Favor, aye. Opposed, stains passes five zero zero. Is there any other materials that we might need, do we wanna continue? Or are we prepared to deliberate on this application this evening? I'm prepared. The only, the only thing we didn't have, that the advocate had, was the letter from Jacobson and his response. However, I feel that he's adequately handled that. The commission presenting Jacobson's concerns and narrative. But that only, that could be an area there that you may wanna take time to consult and read over. If not, we can move forward. So are we prepared to deliberate this evening? I am.
I am.
John? Or Mike, what?
I know, John's supposed to be sitting right.
I know, I'm supposed to be sitting next to him, yeah. Laura?
Yes.
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 Robin, yes. Derek, yes. So I'm gonna have you help me with a couple of these conditions again, so. I'll make a motion to approve re- you go properties, application for special exception use. To construct that seven thousand nine hundred eighty-eight square foot building for contractors, flux base, including soil excavation, parking and septic at seven eleven Middlesex Avenue. Assessors map sixty-two, lot twenty-one with the following exceptions. One was to place appropriate number of boulders in front of the rain guard. Is that correct? Or you wanna word it differently?
No.
Okay. Condition number two would be to place on the documents, the overall height on the site plan of the overall height of the building, which is currently missing. Condition number three would be to add bollards in each of the three outdoor parking spaces as well as at the sides of each overhead garage door.
Wait, hold on. Three parking spaces and how many do you want on the outer?
One, well, one in front in each parking space of the three parking spaces. And then this is the door, so you'd have one at each, each side.
So five in total?
No, there would be, how many doors?
There's four, right, you're four.
So there'd be another eight. A total of eight plus the three.
Would be eleven.
Okay.
You said eight, he said eleven.
Well, eight plus three.
So eight extra at the, by the garage doors.
Right, and then create the parking spots.
And number four was that there would be no storage longer than seven days, no outdoor storage longer than seven days. Okay? Was there anything that I missed?
I could, just one thing, what if I, I mean, we just have to be contingent on the DOP of store them where that goes in with.
That's.
But that's.
That's, that's not outside of our jurisdiction at this point.
Do you have to mention the sign being shorter?
Yeah, we can, sure. And that, that'd be number one, five.
Yeah.
That the Architectural Review Board memo of November eleventh, twenty twenty-five, that the commission requests the tenant signposts should not exceed six feet in height. Thank you. Is there a second? Second is I, Robin, any discussion?
I'm a little stuck on the sign. It says eighty-two inches here, that's.
Right, and they're gonna make it six feet.
Eighty-two inches.
They're gonna make it seventy-two inches.
Correct.
Okay, got it.
Perfect.
Any other questions? I hear you will move to a vote, all those in favor signal by saying aye. Aye, opposed, stain, passes five zero zero, thank you very much.
Thank you.
With Chris not being here this evening, so there's no committee or representative or staff reports at this point. Anyone have any questions or comments, otherwise entertain a motion to return. Seconded by Laura, all in favor?
Aye.
Passes five zero zero, thank you very much, everyone.